Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 23 River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, in his will delivered team justice for all.
Amy, can we have a roll call, please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Morsa.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Paige.
Here.
Okay, next to our approval of the minutes from the September 9th meeting.
I so move.
First and second on the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we'll move on to approval of bills with Councilman Bjork.
Mayor and Councilman Comptroller, I'd like to ask for the approval of bills for this period of 612,825,008 cents, and most everything on there looks real clear, so it was good.
Second.
First and second on the bills, questions?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next move on to public comments. Anybody in your office, now that you're trying to come on up, sign in as Amy had explained to you, and we'll go from there. Everybody has two minutes.
Benjamin Box, 2529, POW-ELL. When I think of lines, I also, I think of a lot of things. I think of red lines, and I think of blue lines. I also lately think of a pink line. You guys don't know Minnie Ramburk, but she was often in town here for a lot of things, and so I feel sympathy towards our community next to us. I lost a young teacher through things. I would see her often at a lot of events here in town, and so I just wanted to make that clear that she's, but I also find that like, a lot of times we have lost, you take pictures of memorials and everything else in town. So when I see that the police station has an art fund that has not been completed yet, and then I see that inside the bid for the fire station are reducing the public art, I think that those things are important as we look forward to the future, have areas where you could put your thoughts and ideas that are not exactly accessible. I appreciate having a very fit fire department. I sometimes wonder if adding that while taking away from the arts is a little bit, you know, a sacrifice that we all make a little bit more, we think. So I would hope that the police station art project gets done, and I hope that it is part of the, I think it's a $6,000 reduction in the fire station gets done, and that those are priorities also for your staff, not just the physical building that poses our physical parts of it, plus our mental and everything else like that, too. So with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
Good evening. Dana Linsky, appearing on behalf of River Falls Alliance for the Homeless. As I'm sure you're all aware, the funding for people at the low end of the income spectrum has been drastically cut. This includes availability of funds for food and housing. This summer was really strange in that it was notable that the emergency housing in the area was all full. Usually, there's empty spaces and people can find emergency housing there in the summer without too much trouble. This bodes well for, or poorly for this winter because that's when homelessness go, not only goes up, but also tends to be much more difficult to survive because of cold weather. So I anticipate that there will be people attempting to camp outside. There are places in town where camping is not legal according to the ordinance, but there's half a dozen or so places inside the city limits where it is. I've attempted to talk to the police chief and to his second in, in charge about the legalities that we might run into if we have people that are attempting to stay warm on public land that isn't owned, rented, leased, or controlled by the city. You would think that professionalism would, would force those in charge of our local police department to discuss such things.
Fifteen seconds.
We're trying to avoid any problems that might happen because of that, and I'm hoping that if the police chief isn't interested in doing that, one of you will be. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has anything? Okay, we'll move on. Next, we're going to have a suicide prevention presentation. I have Tyler Stevens Nunn is going to, who's a teacher at River Falls High School, and then other members of the River Falls Action is here to share thoughts about what families, neighbors, churches, schools, and our community can do to help in this. Thanks.
Thank you all so much. My name is Taylor Stevens Nunn. I'm a teacher over at the high school. We came here September 9th City Council meeting and asked to give this presentation, so thank you so much for giving us the space to do so. First, I just wanted to share a couple of statistics for you, why this work is important. According to the World Health Organization 2024 Mental Health Report, one in five individuals will experience a mental health challenge in their lifetime. This includes youth, and less than half will receive the care that they need. Additionally, suicide is the second leading cause of death for youth ages 10 to 14, and the third leading cause of death for ages 15 to 24. About every 40 seconds, someone loses their life to suicide. Our executive team for RF Action has me and all of the wonderful women sitting right here. We've got Linda, Michelle, Molly, Heidi, and myself. We all represent various factors of our community, both in our work and in the organizations that we're a part of. But I wanted to share a little bit as to why this work is important. I forgot one sheet of paper at my desk, so let me just go grab it. When I started high school at 14 years old, I started experiencing severe headaches, stomach aches, racing thoughts, shaking. I often felt like my body was out of my control, and I would spend hours stuck in rituals and routines, having anxious thoughts run through my head, and it was honestly a spiral out of control, and I was really struggling to get by. I lost friends, I was struggling in school. By the time I was 16 and a junior in high school, I started self-medicating with alcohol to control a lot of those anxious thoughts in my head. I really struggled, and this led to my first suicide attempt. I am a suicide attempt survivor. This is why I'm so passionate about this work. At that time, I did get diagnosed with obsessive-compulsive disorder, OCD, and I went to college to try and get help. At that time, I went to college at UW-Whitewater, and I went to the counseling office, and they told me six to eight week wait to see someone as a mental health professional. That was 10 years ago. My best friend just tried to get help here in River Falls in August, and they were told it's a six to eight week wait to see a mental health professional. And this is now. This is in 2025 in our community. This is a mental health crisis. This is serious, and people are losing their lives because of it. So a network of support is crucial, especially in our rural community, as to why we need to do something about suicide prevention and mental health. So, to share a little bit about what we see in our community, we've been giving out surveys, both on paper and online, and getting people's feedback on what do they see within River Falls. And this is some of the feedback that we get. So, lack of access to professionals, more efforts on budgeting and actually affording the care that they need, having continued education and advocacy within our community, and really access to just security. If people don't have a house or food or basic needs met, their mental health can't get better because their basic needs are not being met. So I just wanted to share some of that community survey feedback that we received. Additionally, there are some existing resources. I know when I spoke with Jeff that we wanted to talk a little bit about what our community can do, so there are already some resources out there. However, as you may know, they're very limited. We do have the 988 Suicide Crisis Lifeline that people can call or text to receive support, but people aren't always willing to ask for help. There is a stigma around mental health, and it takes a lot of courage to ask for the help that they need. Speak Out, Speak Out, NAMI, Peer Support, Youth Mental Health First Aid, and Mental Health First Aid courses, these are all avenues. However, the big thing that I'm here to ask you all about is our idea. We've introduced to you this before, but a community response team is a community group focused on empowering community action, so reducing the stigma around mental health, partnering with local law enforcement, social workers, counselors, community members, and providing this crisis intervention. Before I close my presentation, I just want to give you a little bit of additional information. Here is our ask for you. We would love to meet with you all again in the next one to two months, if possible, hopefully with city council and community leaders to talk about a community response team or a crisis response team in this community. In the meantime, we've given you a lot of resources that you could potentially look into, if you would like to, to see what is going on around the US, because we're not the only people that are facing this challenge, and we're not the only rural, small community that's trying to deal with this. So, just a couple tidbits of information before I close. There is a really amazing crisis response team in Dane County in Madison. Obviously, they're a larger community than us, but it is a really wonderful model called CARES, Community Alternative Response Emergency Services, and it is a partnership between paramedics and mental health crisis workers. So I've included links on the presentation that I shared with your city administrator, and I've also printed off this documentation for you all, if you would like to look at any of these. There's also numerous operations in Waukesha, and then we do have one that's really close to us in Hennepin County, and it's called COPE. Obviously, that is over the border in Minnesota, but they are a mobile response unit. They are open 24/7, 365 days a year. You can call them if you need support. What happens a lot of the time in our communities is the only people you can call is the police, which is great, but there is a barrier between public health and public safety, and people don't always get the support that they need. So here are all of the additional resources that I've put on your presentation for you. We have done months of research since we came to you in April with this idea, and we have looked to see what other communities around the US are doing, even around the world. So I've included a variety, or we have included a variety of teams, organizations, resources, community response teams, crisis response teams, and other organizations that are doing work like this, similar to this. So, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thanks. Does anybody have any questions?
I'd like to ask a question. What signs should we as a society, or neighbors, or family be looking for? And what can we do to help?
Anyone else want to come on up and join me?
The biggest thing is talking about it, removing the stigma. I mean, I share my story with a lot of people. I'm not afraid to say that I have OCD. I'm not afraid to say that I attempted suicide in high school, because it's part of who I am. It's part of the journey. It's part of mental health, and when we talk about it, those things hopefully stop happening. There is a lot of research that says when we remove the stigma around mental health, it can help, so having those conversations could be a first step.
Do you ask somebody, are you thinking of suicide? Have you ever thought of suicide? Or do you try to stay back from it and let them to share it?
If you suspect, ask directly. That's the best course of action, because if I asked you, are you thinking about hurting yourself, that might mean something very different than if I were to ask you, are you thinking about killing yourself? It is a very hard question to ask. I teach youth mental health first aid courses, and that's something we teach the people within our courses, that yes, being direct and asking those questions, if you suspect that someone is dealing with a mental health challenge, you want to be as direct as possible.
I'll also echo. A lot of the, a lot of times, the concern is that if you're asking this question, it might give them the idea. There is a vast amount of research that says no. It will not, in fact, convince somebody or give them the idea of attempting suicide. So, it's important to remember, because I know it's a little scary when we're especially asking our kids, right? We don't want to give them any scary ideas, but.
And Jeff, to address the other side of your question, obviously with any mental health challenge, it's different depending on the person, but if you notice changes in their behavior, whether they're sleeping more, sleeping less, eating more, eating less, like any noticeable changes in their routine, their behavior, their mood, even just asking them, hey, I've been noticing this, are you okay? Are you doing okay? Or, hey, I've been noticing this, I'm really worried about you, can we talk about it? And just opening up that door could be the first step to getting someone the help that they need.
Excellent.
I had a question, Mr. Mayor. So, a question I have would be around, you shared some statistics on the front end of the presentation. Do we have some more local numbers, just so that we could put a little bit more towards what we see in our community, and then also maybe benchmark against state, regional, things like that?
Absolutely. Do you want to share any NAMI? Do you have anything off the top of your head?
I can, I can put together a list. I don't know if you'd like to put that out on the website or whatnot. We have a lot of local resources, but at the end of the day, 988 tends to be more of the centralized number to call, and they used to, and hopefully are still directing more to local resources when you do call them. But I will be happy to provide those for everybody.
Well, and I apologize, maybe I misconstrued my question a bit. So, mine was just when you think of suicide as a problem, right, and we look at mental health and across the whole bandwidth, do we have numbers that show how River Falls' community does against other communities, right? We measure a lot of other things. We can look at gross domestic product and household income and education rates and everything else with school. So I'm curious if there is a sense, like, we know what this looks like directly in our community versus these larger numbers, which I think we all know mental health is, has been a challenge over the, you know, x amount of years with, with COVID-19 being kind of a big revealer of a lot of tendencies and patterns we have in society. So, just to understand it better at a local level, what that problem actually is versus kind of this larger national number, which for me won't be as impactful. I like to see things as close as we can get them.
Yeah, we can give you that information.
I would just say something that I know there was some information out, I believe it was with Healthier Together. So, I'm not sure now if I'm getting the county right. It's either St. Croix or Pierce County, and it would be the youth, I believe it's two in 10 girls has thoughts of suicide in a year, and I believe it's one in 10 boys. That could be ages maybe about 14 to 18, I would say. Just to give you an idea.
I'd also encourage you, look up the Youth Behavior Risk Survey that covers Pierce and St. Croix counties. It's a survey that's put out, and the local school districts will survey the students. So, that has a lot of great information and statistics.
Have you presented to the school board as well?
Not at this time.
I would, I would suggest you do that.
Anybody else? Yep.
Every community is a little bit different. I've always looked at communities and how we can bring people together. And I work in the mental health field, and I'm curious if you guys are working on or have developed something that you would call Community Crisis Plan. So when there's an emergency, a mental health emergency with someone who lives in an area, that they would, that people in the community, we would be aware that there is a community emergency crisis plan, and crisis plans, they anticipate needs within a community. Is that something that you guys are looking at?
Definitely.
Right now, we're working on a tiered system, so looking at if this community response team comes about, or if it's too late crisis, what that crisis plan looks like. So, yes, we are in the beginning.
Fantastic. Feel free to reach out if you want some help developing that. Because you're here, I'm going to ask a question, and it might be viewed as a leading one, and I think it's my last one. Okay, when we think about mental health, I, I feel strongly that based on the data, I've read Jonathan Haidt, Anxious Generation, things like that, smartphones, technology seems to be a significant impact. Is that something that is verified in terms of the work they've done so far, or in the peer-reviewed things you're looking at, or am I a bridge out too far because I'm talking larger mental health versus more specific subset that you're referencing?
But would be something to investigate, absolutely.
Yeah, so Meyer Middle School, the principal did have that as a suggested book for families to read, and it was part of kind of the Wait Till Eight movement, right, and looking at these other things, because when you look at something like Suicide Ideation for Young Women, there's a correlation between smartphone access and Instagram, things like that. So, maybe what I'm trying to say is this is definitely part of a larger conversation, but I do think some of the research is catching up to where it can be tied together better. And, and I think Mr. Morse's suggestion about the school board is really sound, and probably identifying other stakeholders besides the state of River Falls that you want to have involved in the conversation.
Anything else? Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next move on to the consent agenda. First is acknowledgement of the following minutes. We have the Utility Advisory Board from 616. We have the Historic Preservation Commission from 813. We have the Library Board from 84. We have the Housing Authority from 813. Then we have a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment police powers under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes for the benefit of the River Falls Business Improvement District. Then we have a resolution approving auditing services contract. This would award the auditing services contract to Clifton, Lansing, Allen. Next is resolution authorizing Wisconsin DNR Urban Forestry Grant application. Then we have a resolution approving the purchase of materials for Boulder Ridge Electric Distribution Replacements and Upgrades. Then we have a resolution approving snow removal services contract. This would award the contract to Lenahan Outdoor Services. And then we have a resolution approving the 2028 health and dental insurance renewal. And the last one is a resolution approving amendment to purchase agreement with Mega Chef Equipment Incorporated. Does anybody want to poll anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll Consent Agenda item number nine, please.
Anything else? Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the Consent Agenda, Items 3, A through D, 4 through 8, and 10.
Second.
Okay, first and second on all of that. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have Mr. Page, poll number nine.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to abstain from voting on this.
Okay. Okay, so I'll take a motion on number nine.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution approving the 2026 health and dental insurance renewal.
First and second, questions or comments on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then we have an ordinance approving the bid and awarding the contract for the construction of the River Falls Fire Station, and we have our fire chief, Justin Wilson, here, who's going to give us a little presentation.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council, for having me come in and, like you said, present on the resolution approving the bid and awarding the contract for the new fire station. And this, as you can see, we've got the rendering of what we will potentially be looking at. So, a little bit of history. The original fire station was built back in 1955, and then, again, we did an addition in 1969, which is our, if you've ever been in our fire hall, there's that separate bay where we have another apparatus. We had to build some additional room to be able to create space for larger apparatus when we had things that first came in, like our snorkel, our ladder trucks, stuff like that. The overall building itself has been used for many, many things. I don't even think I have them all on here. We had city hall in there, we have the library, the police station, I believe the post office was in that building at some point, if I'm correct or not, but, so that building has been used for a lot of things and has done a great service over the years. Looking ahead into the future and the future for the fire station, over the past year, maybe a little bit more, we've been partnering with our architect, World Architects. They've been a great partner as we're building out and planning for the department in the future. A lot of city staff from all sorts of different areas that need to be involved, from the maintenance side, building side. We've also pulled our fire department team in, and we created user groups, different groups of membership that would have different areas that they would be looking into within the department to say, what do we need? What would we like to have? And then be able to take that information as far as the needs that we have, and start looking into putting those together into plans. We also reached out to a lot of different subject matter experts around communications and mobile radios and different things like that throughout the process as well. With all of this, really looking at kind of that future, which is really a focus on health and, health and safety. The building we currently have, if you've ever looked, we've got our, our jackets and our pants, our bunker gear lined up around the station, which, one, it has a lot of, you know, different chemicals that come off of it from when we come into a fire. Every time we fire up the apparatus, all of that goes onto that equipment. So looking really at the, the health and safety of our, our members and the community of, of building out a new station that has better exhaust systems for our trucks, specific rooms for our turn-up gear, those kind of things. And then the efficiency, overall efficiency of a new building, new electrical, water, bringing in different water mains, but also the operational efficiency for us. Right now, there's times where we have to move apparatus, to get apparatus out for a call. This new building would allow us to be much more efficient to be able to exit from the front and the back of the building, meaning we can get to calls, respond quicker. And then obviously, being ready for the future. We don't always know what the future holds, but this building gives us potential for growth, and, and, you know, have looked at a lot of the planning and areas that we make sure we need so that we have enough space, we have enough storage and things for years to come. And obviously, all of that, we've been looking at with the guidance of the council's direction of the $10 million budget, and really looking for a, a new facility that we can have for decades to come. So with that, on September 11th, 2025, which is, it's just coincidence that it happened on September 11th, but what a great day for, you know, happening for the fire department bid, also with all of the, you know, memories and different things that were happening with September 11th. But we had a great turnout. We had 13 contractors come in and provide bids, and reviewing those. BCI Construction was the construction company that put in the lowest bid at 8.3 million for that base bid, and for those, I think you've seen it in the packet, but base bid is ultimately the demolishment of that, that original building, which is the old PD building, part of the building that we currently use for holding our tender bays and our, our training room. That would be demoed, and then there would be new construction that would be completed there, which would give us our apparatus bays, hose tower that we can use for training as well, different rooms within those three stories for storage, a mezzanine where we can actually do training in the winters and be able to utilize that space to, to use all year round and continue to train. And then the current area that we would keep, which is where our current apparatus bay is, that would include remodeling of that to create a new training room, as well as offices, conference rooms, a lobby area, different things like that. Improved emergency communications, we'll have new fiber lines brought in, different things like that that will really help us to ensure that we have the capacity and the ability to keep up with technology as we move forward within the communications. Underground electrical services, being able to take this time and opportunity to bury some of that electrical, to make that a better, a better service there. And a big, the big one here, again, around that health and safety, is that improved exhaust system. So we'll have exhaust pieces that would be connected to our trucks. When we run those, then it will be going out of the building versus into the building where we're, we're all staying. And then, obviously, all the different safety enhancements and improvements that have happened. Along with the base bid, there are three alternate bids that we have put in. The first one is an additional fifth bay. So right now, the base bid has four bays. If we go with the base bid of four bays, we'll be able to get the majority of our apparatus in, not all, so we will have to continue to store some of that apparatus outside of that. The fifth bay would allow us to have the major equipment that we utilize all in one space. A new roof, so the, the existing building that we will be remodeling, potential for a new roof coming up, which would be the alternate two, and then alternate three would be a health and wellness kind of fitness room. So on the third story, there is a location where we could put an additional shower, bathroom, have a space for workout equipment. We've got quite a few members that utilize the small space in the basement of the PD building that we use, but something like this would be a huge benefit, not only for the fire department, but we could also open the doors up for city staff and things like that, for people to be able to utilize that. So in here, we kind of have a breakdown of the different suggestions and alternates and things like that that are out there. So again, the borrowing side of it, we'd be looking at the $7 million. The cash financing piece that you see in here- The cash financing piece that you see in here is based on the recommendation that we have of the base bid plus the alternate one, which is the additional apparatus bay. And then, again, the USDA funding of the one point four million dollars that we've secured through the USDA grants. And note, again, as we have the rural contract that was signed this year, there is approximately two hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred per year that would also go into this debt payout. So right now, the recommendation that we have on the fire department side is really around that, you know, that base bid plus the alternate, which would give us that additional bay. That would allow us to have all of our apparatus and key pieces of equipment all in one area. Obviously, in a perfect world, we would love to have everything, but we want to make sure to, you know, leave that up to council and if there's any other of the alternates that would make sense to move forward with. But I do think that that fifth bay is huge, because if we did say, let's do that later, it's going to be a huge cost to be able to put that in. So I think now is a great time. And that bid of the three hundred and forty thousand for the additional bay came in a lot cheaper than what we had originally targeted. So I think this is a really good opportunity for us to take advantage of that, to get the alternate bay. We won't have to worry about, you know, different roof systems down the road when we have, if we have to add another bay and things like that, so I think it would be a great time for that. But yeah, you can also see in the additional numbers down there, all of this is going to include, you know, your design, FFNE, which is that furniture fixtures, equipments, your tables, your chairs, conference room things, all the surveying and analysis. We do have the community art piece in there. We did go with the, you know, suggested eighty thousand, but that, I think there's pieces that we can look at there. And then we do have kind of a higher contingency in there of the two hundred and fifty thousand, which hopefully we won't have to utilize all that, but obviously, we do want to have a contingency there, so. But with that, I'll pause for a second. Any specific questions or anything within those numbers or components?
What's the percentage of the contingency? I suppose I could get a calculator out real quick, but do you know, Justin?
I don't know, Hannah, I think it was.
Is Josh, do you know what it is? There you go.
How much? Two and a half percent.
Okay, so you took out of the ten million, not the eight, not the base, okay.
You have any questions on this part of it?
Can we see the picture again?
Yeah.
So this is the, this is the main picture of the first floor, so this would be the footprint of what we have. And so, as you can see, it'll be on your, it'll be on the right-hand side. There's kind of that squiggly line which says alternate one in there, so that would be that fifth bay. So as you can see, there would be some apparatus that we would need to locate in different areas throughout the city. But that has both the four bay and then that alternate option in there. And then that middle structure where you see the, suppose, can you see? Yeah, in this area here, this would be Second Street up front. This middle portion would be the three-story tower that we have, which would allow us to have a command room, so we have visibility, you know, into the apparatus bay to see which apparatus are going out. But this is where our radio communication equipment is, that we can communicate back with dispatch. This area here, this is a huge piece, so this would be separate gear lockers for all of our members. So again, today, it's just all around the garage, the apparatus bay. This would allow us to have lockers within here, and this room has better ventilation that would be doing more of an air exchange to get out any bad chemicals that we have. We have policies where we need to wash our gear right after a fire, but the reality is, if we have twenty or thirty people at a fire, we have one gear washing station, and you can wash two sets of gear in that. So you can imagine, it takes some time for us to get through cleaning all of our gear. So allowing it to be in this room with extra ventilation is great. And then we also have a spare, an actual gear washing room that we have in here, which we did create so that we have the ability to put in a secondary wash machine if we need to, an extractor, to be able to allow us to future state, put another machine in there so that we can wash more gear and get that cleaned quicker. Electrical rooms, this would be, you know, just normal maintenance type of room where we have areas for our SCBA, which is our breathing apparatus that we wear, so we can continue to maintain those. And then this is the area that would be a hose tower. So instead of going the route of purchasing a hose dryer, where it's an electric hose dryer that you put it in, put the timer on, it dries it out, we decided to go the path of having just an air dryer. Basically, we will have a pulley system on there that you put the hose on and you raise it up three stories, and then you just let it hang and dry, which, again, is, I think, you know, we're not utilizing as much energy and electricity, and they dry just as good utilizing that, so. But that three-story tower also allows us to do different training opportunities, too, where we could advance hose lines through there up to the second level, which is an open mezzanine, and, you know, practice different techniques and methods that we have, especially in the wintertime, when it's a little bit harder for us to get outside. And then this area over here, this would be the existing piece. You can see there's three bay doors, and then this is that other bay door, which is where our ladder apparatus stays today. So this would turn into the public vestibule where people would come in. We've got a conference room and then different office spaces, and then different storage for our pub ed stuff and other random storage. We would have a lobby in here, which we are looking at putting some different type of art in, not specific to the art project, but where we have a timeline of the River Falls Fire Department and different things like that, so that the public can see it, which we would also utilize these front doors would simulate the old bay doors that would be open so they can see into the building and then see some of that art and that history as well. A huge component for us is this training room. We've got a good training room now, but when you put forty to fifty people in there and you're trying to do CPR training, there's no room to move, there's nowhere to go. So this room is going to be a little bit about double the size, which is really going to allow us to take on a lot of different trainings and have the room and the space to be able to operate within our training room. Gives us just a lot more flexibility in some of the different training sessions that we do for our members. And then there's a little kitchenette and some bathroom areas, some more storage, and then a multipurpose room where we will have kind of a stand-up desk location with some laptops so people can work on run reports, they can do research in the things that they need, as well as have conference table and things like that for people to sit and meet throughout. Any questions there? All right, already went through that with questions, but. So I think we'd like to move forward with the recommendation of moving forward with the base bid plus alternate one and move that forward and be able to award that and start working with the contractor to get things moving. We would also, obviously, be open to other suggestions of, if there's any other alternates that you feel would make sense at this time to add in.
Josh, or Josh, Justin, wouldn't it make sense just to do the roof right at the same time, adding in alternative two?
It's an opportunity, right? So I know it's hard to tell for sure with a roof, but I think they're saying, you know, it's probably still good for two to five years, depending on weather, this, that, whatever. And, you know, as things continue to go up, you never know. So, yeah, the opportunity is there. We'll be doing a ton of construction and be able to do that now, I don't think would be, it's not going to hurt anything. It would be a benefit and have it done and we move forward.
Yeah, that hundred and thirty-five thousand for alternative two, is that if it's done now? Or is that a second or afterthought?
That would be if it's done now as part of this.
So if you're not doing it now, it's more than a hundred and thirty-five thousand?
That would be my assumption, yeah.
Yeah. I think it's a no-brainer to.
I think, I think the firefighters, you know, they have a passion for this. They really don't get paid a heck of a lot of money for these runs. They're not doing it for the money. You know, this is, this is similar to the police, where it's a lifestyle. It's not a, you know, it's something they're doing because they're passionate about it. And I think sending the message of support by also doing alternative three is important. I think we should do all three alternatives and do it, because as Mr. Bjork said, it ain't going to get any cheaper, so let's not kid ourselves about that. I think doing all three alternatives is the right thing to do because of the cost, and it's also the right thing to do to send a message to the, to the, to the crew that men and women of the fire department are valued in the city. And here's only one way we can show that to them.
And if it's a money thing between recommended, the one point one five, or in the, with the alternate three, the ten point five, we've been talking all night about extra money and the fun balance.
Yeah.
I mean, we can pay cash.
Take it up for a spin.
So, I mean, if that's everybody's hangup.
I see our finance director nodding in the back.
So I couldn't agree more. I think all three of them is well-deserved.
No, that's appreciated. I mean, I think it is, it does make sense. And it's, when I get to, you know, as long as things continue to go through, when I go back and be able to share this news, it will be, there will be a lot of very happy people. Because this, it is, it is, it's a, it's a passion for them. There's a lot of pride and ownership in what we do and this building is part of that. You know, the way we've designed it and the things that we put in it is, it's not just from one person or one company. It's all of the different groups, all of the different people within our department have had say in this and have put this together. And to be able to add those things like the fitness room and the roof and show that, it's a huge testament to the council. It's huge to the city. It means a lot, so.
Okay. So any other questions on this?
No, are you looking for a motion? Are we getting a vote on this?
Let's finish this up and then I'll take a motion on this. So any other questions for Chief Wilson? Okay. So, yeah, I will take a motion on this with the addition of the all-three alternates, if that's what you want?
That's correct.
So go ahead.
So do I make a motion that we approve this bid with alternates one, excuse me, one, two, and three?
Second.
Okay, are there any other questions? We got a first and a second.
Just want to clarify, because with the River Falls Crates policy, we're setting the art budgets by project, so just for informational purposes, we're assuming if that motion's passed, it'll include the eighty thousand dollars for the public art.
Yep, yes. Are we okay with that? We can.
Well, I guess I got a clarifying question when it comes to that. Chief Wilson mentioned that there's going to be some art on the inside. Can we apply that eighty towards that art on the inside, partially, and use it there?
We, it's up to the council. It's the River Falls Crates policy is the council's policy, but your current policy says it's not intended to be architectural, architectural to the building, that that's, you'd expect that to be part of the building project, and this is essentially for a public art commission. So I don't know that we've tested that, but I'll give you the example where we, we kind of drew the line and said, like, the art that's on the shelter building at Glen Park is not technically part of the River Falls Crates. It's more part of the shelter project. And then we did Lightwave, I think that's the right title of that. The Lightwaves is the public art installation. So we're not precluded from doing art that's not necessarily a public art commission within the building, but I just tell you, if you're going to approve the eighty thousand, staff would start with the assumption you want us to look at that as an art commission. And it's supposed to be somewhere tied to the site, so, you know, could it be in Austin's park? Maybe. Would it be on, would it be a mural on the side of the building? It could be. But I guess we'd want feedback from you. I think, I think, you know, I paused that, the project, so we could get you a revised policy. So we've kind of got, I don't know, this cart and horse, but we just wanted for the fire department, we thought as long as you're doing it, we should just know what you want to spend on public art for this project. And no, I don't, I don't think we would say to Chief Wilson, take twenty-five thousand of the eighty and spend it on something art-like in the lobby. Now, it's possible that the commission is some kind of work that wants to be in a lobby, but I don't think that was the intent we understood from council. You primarily were looking for some kind of outdoor displayed commissioned artwork.
Can that number be determined later, or do we have to put a dollar figure, eighty thousand or whatever to it tonight?
You don't have to. I think we're just wanting to understand what the overall budget is and then manage to that budget, so.
It's more convenient if we hash it out tonight.
I would, I would suggest budgeting at eighty thousand and then having, you know, deciding the specific commission and, you know, how they get spent separately from the building, the building itself.
Yeah, and that's how your current policy would say, and that's, that's what I'm expecting to recommend in a revised policy still, is that there's a, you've got a committee that's looking at the art, and they have a budget, and they use it to go out and get RFP to an artist, so. That's a, it's a good-sized commission at eighty, eighty thousand dollars, so.
That's really big. So what, I think what Scott's saying is if we want to lower that amount, we can. And take whatever, say, say you guys are interested in only doing fifty, we could take that thirty thousand and put it towards all of them, one, two, and three. Just an option if you guys.
Yeah, I don't think I would be inclined in lowering it. I mean, we just increased the budget for the building by seven hundred thousand, so. I think eighty is very appropriate.
I think the only feedback I'd give, and I don't know if we need this in a form of a motion, is that I would, I would like to have some representation from the fire department specifically on that River Falls art commission with, specifically to this project. That would be something I'd like. I don't know if we need a motion for that.
I think, I think the mayor points.
The mayor can appoint someone to the commission to discuss that. I think, I don't think a motion is necessary.
Okay. That would be my only feedback, is let's have somebody specific to the fire department be involved in whatever that art.
A motion's not necessary if the mayor agrees.
No, that's fine. It's perfectly fine. That's a good idea, actually. So.
That work for you, chief?
Yeah, yeah, that would be great. I think that helps, because then we can have a little bit of, you know, a little bit of recommendation into what that is representing as well.
Okay.
Okay, so as we said, we got a first and a second with alternative one, two, and three, the numbers as they are. Anything else?
I just have a comment. So, you know, my household sometimes, you know, the temperature is hot, someone has to go make it cold. So I think when we look at this, right, this is a wise financial decision. I appreciate the emotion behind supporting firefighters and first responders and everybody else, but this is a wise financial decision because we have a lot of needs in this community, and certainly, fire is not the only one, right? And as I look at three projects in the last fifteen, twenty years, we've knocked off the police station, we're knocking off the library, and we'll be, you know, starting a process towards knocking off the fire department. So the point is, we as a community are thinking about the big stuff of the community, right? And we're excited to support the fire department, just like we're excited to support police and everything else. But this is a really wise financial decision for what we're trying to do to make it a good state-of-the-art facility that's going to be well-served, so that thirty-five years from now, other councils will get to debate and talk about this as well. So that's why I'm in full support of this. I think it's a great move.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we'll go on to reports, administrator's report. Scott, if you've got anything for us, or anybody's got, anybody's got anything for Scott?
I'll remind the council that they've got a calendar sent out. There's a number of opportunities for you to engage in the community, including fire open house that's upcoming. And then we also will be, the mayor will be soliciting from you all any topics of specific concern for the joint meeting of the school board and the city council. So if you have items that you think the city council and school board should discuss, the mayor will be, mayor will be approving that, an agenda with the school board president upcoming. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Anybody got anything for Scott? Okay, as we'll go on, I got a couple of good news things. First, I want to thank everybody who came out last week to Highview Meadows for our final cookout conversation of the year. I appreciate you staying there and getting a little wet. Members of the city council and I enjoyed the chance to meet some new people and answer questions about the city. The rain even held off long enough to enjoy some outdoor activities before the storm came through. came through. And then the last thing is, next Monday night, September 29th, the River Falls Fire Department is hosting its annual open house. Stop by the fire station for activities, demonstration by the firefighters, and a chance to see some of the plans for the upcoming fire station renovations. Plus, kids will have the chance to meet Sparky the Fire Dog, and there's always a great event, and we hope we can all see you there.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
First, second to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Well, a couple times I've done it before, if we had closed session.